We'll start with the public hearing in a few more seconds. Call the meeting in order for the Village of Round Lake Beach for Monday, March 18, 2019. It's for public hearing. Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Here.
Trustee Butler?
Here.
Trustee Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Let the record show a former's present. Has our motion approved the agenda?
Oh.
Most by Trustee Valdez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Cleveland. Can't change the agenda, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's approved. Yeah, there's one item of business on this public hearing, and that's our 2019-2020 fiscal year budget. Now I'll turn over to Kevin Boiser, our finance director. Kevin?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board, for this time. So at this time, we would be doing the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget public hearing. And we'll go straight into the budget timeline itself and kind of what we have done throughout the fiscal year. As you know, the budget itself is built as we go throughout the fiscal year. And this board has done a really good job with keeping up with throughout the fiscal year and building the budget itself, either through capital planning or making sure that the fund balance policies are in place. So we start with, when the fiscal year starts, we start with 61% of the budget sort of approved. And that is done through either the capital plan, or the forecast, or any salary agreements. Same thing with any replacement plans that we already have in place. One of the new plans that will be coming forward is the land management plan. And this plan is going to be presented to the board by our AmeriCorps intern and our Public Works Department at a subsequent committee meeting. Then we moved on to, between May and October, at this point, we'd review the water rates and as well as the audit itself. So at this point in time, we know where we are going to end up in the fiscal year as far as fund balance goes, and if there's any surplus going into that fund balance itself. Then in November and December, we looked at the insurance premiums, same thing with the tax levy. And we actually looked at the 2020 capital plan, and that's where the bids come in, and the engineer is doing their estimates. So at this point in time, the budget is 88% completed. In January, we looked at the debt service, any kind of bond abatements that need to be approved, and the line of credit that goes towards housing. And by this point in time, 91% of the budget is completed. Then March, April, we are having budget discussions with department heads. We're doing data entry. We're reviewing the, the board is reviewing the annual reports. And then we had the budget hearing and the approval itself, which is kind of where we are right now. And by this point in time, then 100% of the budget is pretty much completed. So when we look at the challenges for 2020, some of declining major revenues, including amusement tax and water sales. Some of the new plans that have to be implemented and funding has to be designated for includes the land management plan. In the long term, this does help with making sure that we have a sustainable, predictable budget. And then, as usual, the fact that the state of Illinois tends to be an issue with the financing, finances, and how they manage their own budget process. Some of the highlights, so maintaining 77 full-time equivalent employees, fully funded capital plans, and we are adhering to the fund balance policy. So that means 65% of the fund balance is already allocated and accounted for in the general fund. And then for all other funds is 25% or higher. But the general fund is the one that we tend to budget for. It's one of the first items that we include in the budget when we start the process. So when we're looking at all the different funds, and I apologize, it should say fiscal year 2020 for all funds, not 2019. But the way they were breaking them down is by operating, and within operating is $20,479,262. And that includes the day-to-day funds, which includes the general fund of $15 million. Water and sewer, $5 million. Metra, $19,000. Police restricted funds, $31,000. Civic Center, $207,000. Then we move on to the capital plan. So that includes the MFT, or the motor fuel tax money that comes in from the state. Most of that money is for debt service. Any housing, this is the line of credit, $500,000 that we budget for. General capital is $2.8 million, and I'll come back to that in just one second. TIF number four, $321,000. And the water main and water sewer capital, $835,000. So with the general capital, you'll see that there is $2.8 million. Out of that, $950,000, the village is using surplus from prior year and $450,000 transferred from the general fund. The rest of that funding is coming from the federal government, and that's the 80-20 sharing agreement for the capital plan for 2020. So while the village is not putting a lot of this money, there is a lot of work that's being done thanks to, again, being able to have the fund balance that is very high that we can use for cash flow. Then we have the replacement funds, which is $724,000, and that includes equipment. So this is where vehicles and other related equipment is included, computers. Assets of $130,000, and that includes things like tables and chairs and different items that are used at the civic center as well. And we have the debt service of $3 million, and that includes $2.4 million for general obligation bonds. So the village abates property taxes, which means that payments for debt service has to come from the general fund. And then risk management of $682,000. So in total, we're looking at $29,608,807. When we look at the revenues for all, this includes all funds, including inter-fund transfers. So transfers from other, from the general fund to the smaller funds are included in here. Tax collection is, represents 50% of the revenues, or $14.8 million. Licenses and permits represents 1%. Fines, 1%. Intergovernmental revenue, these are agreements with the school district, fire district, and that's another 1%. Miscellaneous revenues, $307,000. Charges for services, $5 million. Most of that is related to water sales and civic center rentals. Fees of $242,000. Other financing sources, most of this is either using fund balance or surplus from prior year or the expected 80% sharing agreement with the federal government that's included in here. And then we have the transfers in from other funds of $5.5 million. So it is a balanced budget. So that means that the $29 million in revenues match the $29 million in expenditures. How that's being spent is 18% of that is transfers out, or $5.4 million. 34% of that is salaries and benefits, so it's $9.9 million. And that does include health insurance and all other benefits that the village pays for. Contractual services of $6.2 million. Commodities of 3%, or that includes fuel, salt. Financing expenses of $2.7 million, and that's 9%. And then the capital outlay of $4.5 million. So the general fund itself has a lot more, like a larger breakdown of how the funds are allocated. And that includes all these different departments. So this is the operating department. Overall, it's a 4% increase from the prior year. So $14,649,863 was the budget for 2019. What is being proposed is $15,202,664. So that's a difference of $552,801, and that's a 4% increase. On the water and sewer side, you'll see that there is a lot less department, and it's a 2% increase compared to the prior year. So 1.3 million in 2019, 1.326 in 2020. And how the village is adhering to the fund balance policy, this provides a historical view of the fund balance itself. So you'll see that spike in 2014, where it went to 86%. This is all part of the village's capital plan and long-term plan. So at that time, the variance between the two was brought down to fund the bonds that were issued in 2016. So what is being anticipated with the 2020 budget is that the policy is 65%. Once the fiscal year 2020 is done, we will end up at 68%. So three percentage points above the policy. And that's to make sure that we account for inflationary factors or any changes in between now and April 30th of 2020. So with that, what the 2020 budget accomplishes is maintaining our current level of services, staffing levels and resources, and then funding for all the current capital and replacement plans, including starting some of the funding for the land management plan that will come forward to the board. At this point in time, I'd like to thank the department heads for all their work in doing the data entry and also following the different policies that we have in place, as well as the board for establishing the guidelines along with the village administrator. So without your guidance and support, this wouldn't be, you know, as a smooth process for budgeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, can you just clarify? You mentioned several times about our budget. And what we have is a fund balance being 65%. Could you clarify why we have such a high budget balance, fund balance?
Yeah, that is a very good question. And so that is to make sure that we're prepared for strategic projects. For example, if we don't have a high fund balance policy, then we wouldn't be able to partner with the federal government, for example, to build these streets and use it for cash flow purposes. Another positive thing of this is that when we go, or when we get the call from Moody's about the credit rating for the village, this is one of the items that they highlight. Most communities maintain lower fund balance, and this differentiates the village of Round Lake Beach from all other communities that are around here for having such a high balance on fund balance. So preparing for that rainy day has paid off. And that's the only reason why we have been able, I mean, one of the reasons why we have been able to afford the projects that we are about to get started because it requires the village to pay upfront a large amount of money that if we didn't have, then we, another community could be getting $1.9 million from the federal government if we weren't ready for it, so.
And all the bond buyers, when you go off for bond issues, they look at that fund balance also. When we can save a quarter percent or half percent on the bond, well, interest we're paying that.
Correct.
And it makes a huge difference in our payments.
Definitely, definitely.
Any questions by the board? Any questions by the audience? Well, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
It looks like we're in good hands for another good year. Thank you. Well, if there's nothing else, no other business to conduct, we will ask for adjournment of the public hearing.
Moved.
Trustee Butler? Second by Trustee Nichols. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. We'll start our board meeting in just a couple of minutes. Is all set? Everybody all ready? We'll start the board meeting in just a few more seconds. Call the meeting in order for the Village of Round Lake Beach. This is our board meeting for Monday, March 18, 2019. Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Here.
Trustee Butler?
Here.
Trustee Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Let the record show a former's present. Would you all please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? If not, your motion approved.
Moved. Second.
Most by Trustee. Trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Trustee Husk? We have motion of second. And once again, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved, as written. We have our public hearing minutes from December 17, 2018. Any corrections or clarifications on those? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Most by Trustee Wallace?
Second.
Second by Trustee Nichols. We have a motion of second. Any questions, corrections, clarifications? Again, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. We have the council meeting minutes from February 25, 2019. Any questions, corrections, clarifications? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by Trustee Butler?
Second.
Second by Trustee Cleveland. We have motion of second. Any questions, questions, clarifications? Again, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those, minister, approved. Let's see, we do have expenditures this month of $783,669.26. Some of the larger items there were our Fresh Lake Michigan water from CLC Jawa, a little over $156,000. Our health insurance for our staff, a little over $134,000. Not too many big expenses this month, which is nice. We do have a lot of other expenses that all the staff have reviewed, the board have all reviewed. Any of the trustees have any questions on any of the expenditures? If not, it's a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Nichols, second by Trustee Husk. We have a motion of second. Once again, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Those expenditures are approved. We have no ramifications this evening, so we'll go right to our standing committee reports. Any trustees have any reports? And then, okay. On the mayor's report tonight, we have a few items. First, they have the appointment of a plan commissioner. As you all know, Dick Barr got elected to the county board. He had to resign from the plan commission. We have another resident, Jim Fisher Keller, that stepped up and is interested in being on the commission. We had a discussion about it. He has a lot of good input and a lot of good ideas, and he's willing to put the time in to do the job right, which we appreciate. Is there a motion to approve Jim's appointment to the plan commission for Dick Barr's unexpired term? Most by Trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Second by Trustee Nichols. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
That's approved. Jim, we're gonna come on up, get this sworn in. Sorry, I've got to offer you the last chance to back out.
Nope.
Hi. All right, just repeat that for me. I, Jim Fisher Keller.
I, Jim Fisher Keller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commission.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Sorry.
Fine print.
Can I probably say a quick hello to the trustees?
You can take that one if you'd like. Thank you.
Rest of the gym, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is the National Service Recognition Day proclamation. We all look for volunteers for a lot of different programs throughout our communities, and volunteers are what really make things happen. We all know that from just being with the village here. So in honor of that, have our clerk please read the National Service Recognition Day proclamation.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's elected leaders are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, they educate students for the 21st century jobs, fight the opioid epidemic, respond to natural disasters, and support veterans and military families. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. And is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 2, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Richard H. Hill, Mayor of the Village of Round Lake Beach, do hereby proclaim April 2, 2019, as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Most by. Trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by Trustee Valdez. We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. And just a quick little announcement. We all have supported Special Olympics. Our police department has done several fundraisers for Special Olympics over the years. It's my honor to announce we've had a couple of Round Lake Beach residents, Ryan and Daniel Kramer, who were all participated in the Special Olympics. Last week, they went down to Abu Dhabi, and they actually won the gold medal for bocce, bocce ball down in Abu Dhabi. And they'll be on their way back later on this week. And we hope to hold some kind of special celebration someplace in the community for them, to honor them for that great achievement. Watch your calendars. Is there a clerk's report tonight?
No report, thank you.
We have a few items of business here. We have item A, is an ordinance approving the annual municipal budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020. We just held the public hearing on the budget. There were no comments from the public. We're not ready to approve it for the period of 5/1, 2019, to 4/30, 2020. It is a balanced budget, and our staff, once again, did a great job putting it together and looking at all the different programs, what's working, what's not working, and make sure they don't keep on funding something that doesn't work, and make sure we do fun things that do work in our community. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Most by Trustee Wallace?
Second.
Second by Trustee Nichols. We have a motion of second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
That's approved. Item B, is a resolution approving an award of contract to Brightfield Landscape Services, LLC. This is a contract for landscaping services for our main facilities. It includes fertilizing, weed control, other odds and ends, and they're those are the main ones, as well as the cutting the grass. We'll have other contracts for the houses and so forth that don't cut the grass. We need to go and pick that kind of stuff up as necessary. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by Trustee Butler, second by Trustee Valdez. We have a motion of second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item C, is a resolution approving the license agreement relative to 400 Shorewood Road. The Villa Jones property by the old Shorewood Foods, we're going to license it to the business to increase their parking lot so they can reopen it and hopefully have a nice facility there. That should help actually improve the whole neighborhood down that way. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by Trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by Trustee Butler. We have a motion of second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item D, is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the Village of Round Lake Beach. Every year, we do review our zoning map to make sure it's accurate and in conformance with all the laws. This year, we make a couple of updates for zoning changes that occurred over the last year. Nothing major. And as we all know, that we're also gonna be consolidating all of our lots, lakefronts, that'll be on for next year's after it's consolidated. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by Trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Second by Trustee Wallace. We have a motion of second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item E, is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding relative to community development block we had funding. Each year, we apply for community development block grants from the federal government that are administered through Lake County. The Hawthorne Drive road reconstruction, the drainage improvements project was approved for the March 15, or for the March 15, 2019, second hearing. This is a memorandum of understanding that we need to execute to allow the village to incur reasonable, reimbursable costs prior to the Lake County of receiving funding from HUD. This is also contingent on approval by multiple bodies, including Housing and Community Development Commission, Health and Community Service Committee, and Lake County Board. Nothing's guaranteed, but we like to move in on this thing a little faster than wait for the last minute to get things moving. And what we're gonna be investing at this point isn't huge money, and I think that even if we, for some reason, it doesn't come through, we should be able to do the project using the same information anyway. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by Trustee Nichols? A lot of seconds. Trustee Valdez, second. We have a motion of second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item F, is a resolution authorizing an approval and award of contract to Pipe View in an amount not to exceed $91,877.25. As a contributor to the Fox Lake Sewer Plant, we must televise 10% of our sewer system each year, make sure we don't have any breaks or cracks or water infiltrating through areas that are causing damage. We do bid this out with some of the other contributors to the We do bid this out with some of the other contributors to the plant, and we get a very good price on that. I think we get like 40% less than we used to get doing it by ourselves. So it's been a great program of working together and sharing that service. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by trustee Valdez. Second by trustee Husk. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item G. It's an ordinance approving the consolidation relative to Lakefront Park. As I just mentioned, on our zoning map, we had a whole bunch of individual lots down at the Lakefront Park. They were never consolidated in one large parcel. We're going to take care of that tonight. It's been through the Planning and Zoning Committee. They took a look at it and agreed that should be consolidated in one lot. And so we're going to do that, provided you guys approve it. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Most by trustee Butler. Second by trustee Cleveland. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
That's also approved. That was our last item of business. We do have executive session on the agenda tonight. But before that, it is open to public participation. Anyone has a question or comment for the board, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and either state your comment or ask your question. Well, thanks for being here tonight. We do appreciate that. We do have executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, executive session minutes, and personnel. Do we have motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Most by trustee Valdez. Second by trustee Wallace. We have a motion to second. Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
That is approved. We will be in executive session afterwards. On the agenda, we have action on executive session items, where you may or may not take any action on those items. You're welcome to stay, but it's not required. Thank you. Yeah.
Well, he has to sign, so I have to. Yeah, I'll just wait. I'm almost done, I think, you know? Got a new gal coming in. No, I haven't. Dave hasn't asked me to come in, or, or, you know, I don't know if Jessica will be doing it, or what. Hi. Have a good night. Good, how are you? What's it doing? You were late. Did you want me to stay and get signature for the mayor? Am I coming back to finish the meeting?
You're staying here. I was just going to take the record.
I thought you had your own record. I forgot. Um, I should have. How many did you need, Jessica? Alright, so she printed one. Do you need to go make some copies of this and have him sign? This would be her copy anyway, meaning the back, the binder copy, so.
So, can I make a copy of that?
I have time when they're an executive, so what do you mean, how many do you want?
Two more.
Two?
Yeah. So it's going to be like about five feet tall? It would look fantastic, but it would require steps. So the bench is better than it is for them. That's great, that'd be a place to be. Yeah. Whatever the retention wall, when you put the wall up, it's got to be, you know, faced on both sides. Eventually, they got, you know, yeah. But, so, how high can this be before you, you worry about people? Well, I need to kind of go up. Oh, so you're screwed. What is it? It's like, I guess 36 inches. Oh, no. Where you have to, that's, I think that's the height where you have to. Right, so when I take into the wall, you got to be tall. Nice round here. Kill it.
Call the meeting back to order for the Village Rowan Lake Beach for March 18, 2019, our council meeting minutes. Council meeting. We're out of the executive session. We have no action on those items. An executive session is for motion to adjourn. Second. By trustee Nichols. Second by trustee Husk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, here's Scott at the last concert we went to. We can't hang out together. That's him with the lead singer, okay? Okay? And the about burned down Genesee Theater.
What?
Yes.
I did.
Did you see that, though? So they had four pyro, okay. We can get them for Beach Fest, $20,000. Without their pyro show, $15,000. So they had, um, they're called Hairball. Google them and watch the dude's hair start on fire.
And he continued playing, doesn't miss a lick.
And he continued playing, doesn't miss a lick.
It takes three people to put the hair on.
Yeah, yeah. So, they're at Genesee, and the manager tells me, I know the manager, he tells me he's going to do the whole pyro show. And I'm like, are you kidding me? He's like, yeah, he's like, I'll get you tickets. I'm like, okay, cool. So we got tickets and we went, me and.